Meeting come to order. Roll call shows all board members are present except for Mr. Sean Gillie. If everybody would please stand for invocation and pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Hallelujah, God, we come before you today thankful that you've allowed us to have another day. We know that you don't promise another moment for any of us, God, so we are thankful that you've allowed us to be here and to be safe and have another day. God, we ask that you watch as we have this meeting tonight and that you go with us and be with us and be with all the people who are making decisions. Give them clarity, give them wisdom, and be with them, God. We pray for everybody who works for Electric County Public Schools and most of all, God, we pray for all of our students and all the children in Electric County that you're watching over them, that they have summer vacation, that you're taking care of them, making sure that their needs are met and that they're fed and taking care of them. God, we love you and thank you for your wisdom and all your lessons. Can you ask this in your name?
I would just please to signify the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
And this is the regular scheduled meeting for the Electric County Board of Education, June 23, 2025, and we're here in the Lyndle Smith Conference Room. First item we have on our agenda is approval of minutes from the regular board meeting I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting in May.
One second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I opposed. Eyes have it, motion passes. Next item we have is student school and staff recognition. We do not have a school scheduled for this meeting. Next item we have is public participation of guests.
Tommy, Zach.
Zach? I thought I seen you come in, but then...
He's hiding behind you.
He trying to hide behind you, Tommy?
Probably easy. We'll start with the AE building. We've got the lead paint abatement is roughly 90% complete. Next couple of weeks they will have that finished up 100%. We've got the painting contractor going in behind them, drop all on the ceiling as they finish the rooms up. I believe they got two or three rooms left and that will also be finished. All of the restroom floors have been demoed. They're prepping those for the new finish. The wall prep and first coat paint is roughly 50% completed. All of the new garage doors and coiling doors have been installed. All the new mini-split HVAC systems have been installed. New thermostat and thermostat wire run to the existing rip tops. And the electrical package bids this Wednesday, the 25th. And they'll bid it over at our job trailer at 2:00. The football field, the two items that HBC wanted changed have been completed. Those are being sent to Levi today. So I'll get with him tomorrow and everything should be good on his end and he will give us the official certificate of occupancy. And all of the minor punch list items will be finished by the end of this week and that'll be all, that'll be everything on that project.
How much can we give us to pay for the AE building?
For the AE building? As far from what I understand, I know my bosses have had several conversations with the ER assist and I think we've been dealing with directly. From where all this electrical stuff had come up, this is all code and standard upgrades. I do know FEMA does cover code and standard upgrades. Every electrical issue that is on these new drawings were all code by issues.
On the field over here, there not paid or something like that?
From what I've been told, yes. I do know that ER assist has a second appeal. They're filing that early to mid-July, I believe.
So could this same thing happen at the AE building?
I personally do not talk with FEMA directly. That'd be in conversation with the ER assist.
Is all that due to changes from the previous administration to the new administration, you think?
It could potential, I'm not sure.
Okay. We'll get ER assist to come in July and get that updated as well. We can see that.
Anything else?
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public participation of guests. If not, we're going to move.
My name is Davy Hayes. I'm a bus driver employed through UOL. I've been for 15 years. This group behind me consists of not just bus drivers, but monitors and custodians and cooks. And we all are just asking for a 5% raise. Speaking from bus drivers, this has been a really hard year, a rough year. As you know, us as well as surrounding counties has been struggling with keeping enough drivers. And so we've been having to pull a lot of slack and do extra runs and fill in here and there and double up. And there's a lot that goes on that is handled so well that it all gets covered that I don't think it is made aware to everyone how bad it is. So with all of that that's went on, we're just asking for a 5% raise.
Raises is another thing that is on the agenda for tonight?
I was going to talk about it in its comments.
Oh, okay.
You can.
I didn't know, I needed to stay here.
And I want to speak on behalf of instructional assistants. I have to do two jobs in order to support my family. I was a single parent. I do an instructional assistant in a classroom. I work in the autism unit. And for what I do, me being here nine years, I don't think it's adequate pay. And we have a lot more coming into those classrooms. We are underst- we're understacked, we're overpopulated. Our rooms are small and we work ourselves to death. I ain't gonna lie, there's days I go home but I've been beat, I've been beat, I've been, my hair to be pulled. I mean, I just don't think our pay as classified across the board is adequate. As the bus driver, as the instructional assistant, I mean, and I will stand with them and say that I just don't think we're treated fair. I mean, we do work, we do show up, we do stand out because if we're not rolling on those buses, those kids aren't coming in. And if we're not in the classroom taking care of those special needs kids, they're going to have to be sent home. So I think as a group that we're showing up and we're standing out. And we are a group and there's more, there's more of us. But this is what showed up tonight. And I think, I think we deserve something. I think we deserve our 5%. I mean, 30 cents as opposed to 70 cents makes a big difference on my pay. That could tell whether it's a loaf of bread or if it's a pack of buns. I mean, it's a difference. I just think we need to be heard.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Josh Brown. I've been a bus driver here for seven years-ish. Just to reiterate on the pay, you know, it starts out at $12.93, tops out at $17.61 after 15 years. Me and a couple of the other drivers have did some research with the other counties and called. Their starting pay is upwards of 15 plus and they go up to 20 plus for their 10 years. We just think the 5%, it's a little amount, but it will be enough to get started for us to be satisfied this year. You know, we checked not just with other school districts, but other places in the county like MCHC. Their custodians start out at 19 and out. And it's less stressful and less responsibilities when you're hauling 40 and 50 kids behind you, you know. At the beginning of last year, I was in an accident. Thankfully, I only had eight kids and it was very minor. But that just goes with the stress of the job that you can have accidents and you're responsible for the lives behind you, the lives you pick up. You're the first person those students see every day and the last ones that see you. So you make their day and you end their day if you're joyful and smiling, you know. We're the first persons that the students see, so.
Is there anyone else?
I started out being, my name is Rebecca Fields and I'm a bus driver, but I started out being a substitute teacher. And because I didn't have the hours, I was called a pilot sub. So I only made like $9 and something an hour. So then I went through the bus training and become a bus driver also. Well, after I became a bus driver, after they give you eight hours, then you can't sub no more. You can only sub for four hours. And I actually went from a substitute teacher to a teacher's aide and I didn't get any extra pay for that either. And so when I went to the only four hours, well, they're not going to call you in to substitute for four hours when they can get an eight-hour person, when they're needing eight hours. So that put me out of that. So then I had to go get another job at Food City and I've done that for quite some time until my back wouldn't let me do it any longer. So now I'm back to just bus driving. And I really think that, you know, we do a lot with the kids, all the kids that get on my bus, I greet them in the morning, I greet them in the evening. They all love me to death. And I think that we should be recognized a little bit for that.
Is there anyone else? No? Then we'll move along in the agenda. Next item we have is reports and the first thing there is superintendent comments.
I want to share a little bit of data with you regarding a raise. The drivers met with me, some of the students have even not met with me last week and we talked about it. You know, we did a 5% raise last year and talked about we'd like to be able to come to the table and do the same. This year it would depend on our attendance. With the declining enrollment, our attendance has to go up in order for us to get the same amount of dollars. You know, we are on fixed income essentially and raises have to be based on what you have left at the end of the year. And so while it's still in June, I don't have final numbers for June for the whole year because that'll have to come after the end of the month when we'll get our bank reconciliation. Tommy, you jump in here and help me if please. When we look at what's left over at the end of May, we have $1.9 million. June is the month that we pay all of our summer salaries in. So June is a heavy month. When we look at what's left, we can recommend a 2% to 3% raise across the board for all district employees. Adopt a thinking to where a place that we could actually afford 5%. For every percent, it's $150,000 is what it costs the board. So you're looking at about $800,000 for a 5% raise across the board. Now, we didn't run numbers for, you know, for a different combination, you know, in the past, you know, the year before last we gave a 2% raise. I think Richard and I looked back and the year before that we gave like 50 cents an hour or quarter an hour trying to, you know, we've worked with the board for years on trying to get that gap where classified employees do get paid more. And so we've given, I think, probably over the, Tommy's tenure superintendent and mine, probably in the ballpark of 10 to 14% over the last 10 years.
Do you, do you remember what we done during your time, Tommy?
We did a 1, 2, 3, I think during that, so it was about 6%. And then within the first 10 years, I think it was somewhere around 9, 9 or 10%. And then you done 5 last year, so. But over that length of time, it's been sustained. Because I think our, what was white, 7, 7, about six years ago?
Yeah. And that's not to say that...
And that's not to say that everybody don't deserve a $100 per hour.
And I told them, we're on the same page. I agree, they all deserve a raise. It's just how much of a raise can we afford to give? If we had the money to do 5%, I would make that suggestion today and not look back. But right now I have some reservations about that amount. We can look at it differently. We can look at...
Well, really right now, until we get the next bank reconciliation, we don't know what we can do. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think roughly what she's saying is that $800,000 would put us in the range. While we have left over at the June, we wouldn't have enough to cover $800,000, is probably what she's saying. But you can show the exact numbers actually, you're perfect. Well, actually, maybe we'll, all of our payroll is, several of them are paid by law. We have to have all of our paydays end at June 30. So even though you get paid in August, that's different. We have it early in June by law. And so we'll know to end June 30 for sure exactly how much we spent and exactly how much we brought in revenue and then you'll see exactly how much was left out. We got $400,000 left over, you get an $800,000 raise, you're 40,000. And that's, you'll know that by June 30 for sure. Maybe, maybe we should table this till...
Till we get...
But you're right, maybe.
Yeah.
For making decisions. But we want to do everything we can for employees, but we also got to look at your budget and see what you can do. Yeah, you definitely have all the information you need, my name is David.
Okay.
I'll motion we table it too.
I'll second that motion. Motion and a second to table discussing raises till the July meeting when we got all of our information in. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? I opposed. Eyes have it, motion passes. What else do you have?
I have a couple things on it. We have been invited, Electric County Schools have been invited to join a cohort, local effort of learning from the Department of Education because of the work we're doing with Portrait of a Learner. And Amber has shared that throughout the year. But with that work, they've invited us and they only invite districts to join who are, this is the third cohort that works. So it's, I consider it a great honor for us to be invited to join. So we're going to embark on that work with them. And it really looks at that local accountability that we've talked about. What do we want that to look like for Electric County and how do we build out those vibrant learning experiences for our students? And it gives us a group of people to work with in order to make that happen. So I'm excited about those opportunities. And that's all I have. We have a rather long agenda with the policy effects, so let's be brief.
Moving along, next item we have is school-based decision-making council minutes. Is everything in order there, Mr. Hoffman? Next item we have is monthly curriculum and instruction report.
Hey, everyone. Again, I started thinking, well, you know, it's during the summertime, there's no school going on, but whenever you start to think about the things that we've been working on, it's actually been a pretty busy time for us. One of the biggest things, and I guess you guys will be talking about policies tonight, is looking at what are the new policies that have been sent out and what that means for each department. So for us, one thing is looking at our certified evaluation plan and making corrections there. And then there are some other things that will have implications for our instructional department that hopefully moving forward, we'll be able to make changes where they need to be made. We met with PRI, with our grant partners, to look at the upcoming year and where our instructional priorities are going to be. So we are looking at our science and elementary, elementary and middle science with Open SciEd, which is a new resource that we have. So that's going to be a focus for us. Also, the Numeracy Accounts Act, which is focused on elementary math. So that's going to be a big part of our instructional department this year and the work that we're doing. And then one of the other large pieces is like Ms. Yance talked about, the Portrait of a Learner and Vibrant Learning. Next month, I'm going to have some things to give to you guys that you can look at and see and approve so that we can share our Portrait of a Learner out with our teachers and staff on opening day. The biggest thing for the instructional department right now has been the principal workshop in July. So we're going to cover topics like leadership and vision and how those connect to those principal standards, school safety, student discourse and math and science, how we can get students talking to each other and analyzing things and having discussions, updates from other departments. And then we have Crystal Doolan, who is part of that L3. She is an innovation specialist at KDE and she's going to come in and work with our principals on Portrait of a Learner and Vibrant Learning. And then we're going to attend a Vibrant Learning Collaborative in Laurel County. And that's going to give us some real hands-on, real-world examples of what vibrant learning can look like in our classrooms. And then finally, we're going to attend a training on evaluation and feedback with P3 Group from KDE. And that'll kind of round out our principals workshop. Then it will be on to opening day and planning all those professional learning opportunities. So it's a busy time for us. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you, Amber.
Next item we have is monthly maintenance and transportation report.
If you don't look in your board packet, you'll see the maintenance and transportation report. On the maintenance side, you can see where we've got our summer waxing, some of the bigger items that you usually don't see every month. We've got our summer waxing stuff in there, the roof at AE's in there, and also the supplies for the gym floors where we redo the gym floors during the summer. So that's how come it's a little bit larger than normal. Everything else is just normally working with our air condition still in our buildings, making sure any maintenance things that they have sent to us for summer work. We need to take care of on our busing. We are, we were running summer school and summer programs and we're still doing our service on our buses in the garage. It's a little bit slower right now while we're not hauling children every day, but still got to suck it ahead. Have any questions about any of it?
All right, thank you. Thanks, sir. Monthly student attendance and enrollment report.
As it is June, we don't have any enrollment. And as you can tell, some of my staff is on vacation this week and next, or at least off from work. So we don't, Ms. Baker's not here with us tonight.
And I see our student representative with the board is not here as well.
He's not, but he is at the governor's school for the honors. So he's got a busy summer ahead, but he'll be back with us in July.
Report from LCTO, LCESP.
Tabitha Mead is going to join us. Hello, everyone. And my name is Tabitha Mead. I'm a special ed teacher here in Electric County and I'm also the vice president for the LCTO. And last month, we talked about our scholarships. We did pick our scholars. They've got the scholarships and all that, so that's done with. And the biggest thing right now is, I know it sounds redundant, but we are asking for a 5% raise across the board for everybody. We know things may come up, but we do want to propose that and if you can consider that. But also, I know Ms. Brown has talked to Ms. Yance and Mr. Josh Yance about maybe changing our scales, pay scales from when we, like if you got your rank three, rank two or rank one. So by the years that, years of experience. So the, right now, we're looking, she's looking at the one for Knott County. And with that, that does make the pay a little bit more each year and more expense you get. So that way we can keep our teachers, keep our aides, and keep everybody around. So we would dislike if you want, could consider that as well.
Thank you, Tabitha. And she, Ms. Brown has been sharing that information with us and when we get to a point, we'll share it with you. I think our place to go for certified staff ends up 20 or 25 years. 25 years is the last bump and some districts around us go all the way to 30 or do different bumps at different times. And so that's what we're going to do.
$4,000 almost.
Yeah.
Do what now?
Once you get all of, all of that threshold, everybody gets an extra $1,000. Certified, 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 that's about what I hear. There's another quarter, 25 years in the, certified is about...
So they're going to compare districts around us and see how their staff or scale matches up because it'll be based on number of years of experience, okay? Is that right? Is that correct?
Okay. Moving along, old business, we have none, new business.
New business, you have the first reading of our policies and procedures. And Ms. Brown, who takes care of our policy committee, has given us a great, not only do you have the exact policies, but you have a summary that she's done for us and I won't go through each and every one of them because they're extensive this time. And these policies are basically the legal changes. KSBA has proposed these policies based on what the legislature passed. The big one being for us, policy, it's 8.2323 and 8.2324. And that responds to Senate Bill 181 about communication with students and traceable communication systems. Essentially, we as a district will have to, we have the policy, but we have to adopt a platform in which students and school staff can communicate, but it also be traceable. Things like social media, you know, the Facebooks, Snapchat, the TikTok, and even cell phone texting is not considered traceable communication. So anytime a staff member corresponds with a student, it has to be traceable. And there's about four different platforms that we're looking at. Randy actually is heading that up for us, of course, because he's the technology guru. But he met with, he's met with two of them and has another call tomorrow. So until we, we hope to make a, we hope to make a recommendation to the board in July about which app to go through or to use for the school year. Until then, the only traceable communication that staff should be using with students is the email system. You know, every student gets a state email that is considered traceable. So right now, we can communicate with our students through email, makes it traceable. And then in July, we'll have a recommendation for one of the apps. We're looking at Aptige and Parent Square. And there's two others that I can't necessarily remember the names to because we've been inundated with lots of options. But Aptige is the platform that we also use for our district webpage. And so they have a communication platform as well. So we want to look at the ease of use, the traceability and cost, of course. So in July, we'll have a recommendation. But the policy itself is there, it follows the law so that we can continue to work with our kids and give them the information that they need and get the information from them that we need on a regular basis to do so to follow the law and to follow the traceable communication. This is the first reading. We don't make any action. Just if you have questions or possible changes, let me know and we'll go through those. One other that I wanted to make note on is policy 9.2241 in regards to over the counter beds. You know, they passed a law that a board can determine that no over the counter beds can be given to students, even by the school nurse unless there's a doctor's order. That's one that we have to opt into. And I don't think, I think our school nurses and our school health department people would tell you, they don't feel like that's necessary. You know, we have school-based clinics, we have nurse practitioners and other people there on staff in that. I don't think they would think it's necessary, but we'll have to choose by next month whether we want that to be part of our policies or not. And other than that, unless you have specific questions.
Anybody have any questions? Moving along, next item we have is approval of Kentucky River Health District, Health Department Nurses Agreement. Agreement with NTI days covered or not covered?
Yes. The health department, we partner with them for our school nurses, for five of our school nurses. And one thing they made us aware of is, you know, we pay part of it and they pay part of it, but when we have NTI days in the winter, they don't get paid for NTI days. And so we went that long stretch and they could have gone a whole two weeks without pay at all. Sometimes it may be one day of pay there, but you know, this winter, we missed a lot in a row. And he's, I was talking to Scott Lockhart, he said actually districts have reached out to add those 10 days into their contract and that would be $2,000 per nurse. So that'd cost us $10,000 for a district to add those days into paying school nurses for... for NTI days. And that's completely up to you. We have an agreement to sign either, either way. I do think most districts are paying for NTI days.
Would that be something that maybe we should also table until the July meeting to get all of the other numbers in?
To handle it all.
That way you've got it all at one time?
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable with everybody? Is that okay, girl? The next item we have is consent items. There's several of those, Ms. Yance?
Yes. First, we have two students who made the approval of which one is school days. Two is our annual pledge of collateral with community trust base. Three, Martha Joan Potter's asked us to extend their secretary's days by 20 days paid by the school allocation. Four is our bluegrass renewal proposal. That's the insurance that we took out last year to continue this year. Five is our district funding assurances. That's an annual thing that we have to turn into Kentucky Department of Ed that shows that we intend to comply with all of the legal regulations. Six, this is the annual approval for the superintendent to hire and do what's necessary to get schools started. Seven is approval with SAV, SAV the Children Subagreement. You know, we partner with SAV the Children, and they have math and reading tutors in our buildings, and that's for the next 25, 26 full year. Eight is our drug testing, and we can only prove that for one year only. Nine is our service agreement with Matt and Tom for school-based clinics and for our employee drug testing. 10 is our mileage reimbursement rate, 43 cents a mile for July through December, because that's the same as a change we call the state rate. 11 is an MOU with United Service School Members. This is a partnership between United, us, and our full-service community school group who will pay our part of the United, but it gets math tutors that focuses on math to 3, for 3 through 5 grades. And they'll work with two of our schools that we can determine which to, we just need the approval. 12 is our paid membership dues, our annual dues. And 13 is rental agreements. We have one in for county community, our music school to use the high school for the music this summer. We have, we'll have another coming in on Ressland, but we have our paper work, and that's not until September, so we have time for the next court meeting.
Heard the reading of the consent items. I'll make a motion that we approve those. Motion in the second to approve the consent items. Is there any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Next item we have is business and financial. Approval of financial report and approval of payment of claims, transfers and salaries.
Mr. Tommy Surgeon said unless tonight, plus Josh is on vacation.
You let him get away and go to Lake or go to Deeds?
I'm sure he did. Our general fund balance is $15,964,179. Special revenue, $6,614,880. Of course, that's a princed, so you know that's negative. District revenue, activity funds is $30,750. Capital outlay is $584,900. Building funds, $1,277,620. Construction fund, $1,508,964. Debt service, $1,196,330. And again, that's a negative, because it's in princed, so it means we owe that. Debt service cash with fiscal agents, $34,150. And food service, $344,346. And as always, attached to the back is our salaries and our bills. So obviously, we need a motion to pay our bills.
Motion in the second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, sir. Next item we have is personnel, a review of superintendent's report on personnel.
You see the personnel report attached. You can see we have some retirements from the last school year, and that we've already been hard at work to get people in place for the next school year. There'll still be more to come in July, but that's the preliminary report.
Next item we have is approval of employee educational leave.
We have a young man who works for us as an instructional assistant. He's going to be doing his student teaching in the fall, so he's asked for permission for leave and help in his position. So we'll need a motion to vote on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Motion in the second to approve employee educational leave. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Next item we have is other. I'll need a motion to go into executive session at 7:05 PM under KRS 61810, Troy Dingus et al versus Letcher County Board of Education, case number 25-CI-00141, Letcher Circuit Court. Got a motion in the second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.